Declare the motion passed. Employment Amendment Number Two, Bill Twenty Seventeen. Council now becomes committee of the whole council to consider the Employment Amendment Number Two, Bill Twenty Seventeen. Members may refer to the appendix to the script for the debate and voting arrangements for the bill. I will first deal with the clauses with no amendment. And I propose to question to you that the following clauses stand part of the bill, clauses one, two, six, eight, nine, and ten. Does any member wish to speak? I now put a question to you that the clause is read out by the clause stand part of the bill. With those in favor, please raise their hands. Those against, please raise their hands. I think the question is agreed by majority of the members present. I declare the motion passed. Clause seven. The Secretary for Labor and Welfare and Dr. Fernando Zheng have respectively given notice to move the amendments to amend clause seven as saw in the appendix to the script. Members may now proceed to a joint debate on the regional clause and amendments. I will first call upon the secretary to speak and move his amendment. I will then call upon Dr. Fernando Zheng to speak, but he may not move his amendment at this stage. Upon the conclusion of the debate, the committee will first vote on the secretary's amendment. If the secretary's amendment is passed, Dr. Fernando Zheng's motion may not be moved. Secretary for Labor and Welfare, you may move your amendment. Chairman, I move my amendment to amend clause seven and set out in the appendix to the script to amend clause seven of the bill. Under section sixty-seven A will be added. This amendment is moved in response to the request of members of the B C in general. Members do not have any objection to this C S A. The purpose is to extend the limit of prosecution that is under subsection six or seven of the magistrate ordinance. Under section twenty-six of the magistrate ordinance, in any cause of an offense other than an indictable offense where no time is limited by any enforcement for making any complaint or laying any information in respect of such offense, such complaints shall be made or such information laid within six months from a time when a matter of such complaint information respectively arose. At present, there is no statutory time limit specified. The offenses under section sixty offenses of you and hence section sixty of them applies to section sixty-six and seven. At the bill's committee, members suggested that we consider extending the time limit to allow sufficient time for victims to make a complaint so that E A will not be let loose because of the time limit. We agree to extend it to twelve days, I mean twelve months after the commission of defense to allow job seekers sufficient time to make a complaint and also to tie in with section fifty-six of the E O, which requires E A to keep for a record of not less than twelve months after the expiry of each accounting year. As we've explained to members at a bill's committee meeting, it is very important for a job seeker to make a complaint to the Labor Department ASAP because records and may be lost and memory may lapse. And it is important that a complaint be made earlier. And receipts of E A's and also employment records kept by the E A and also the evidence of the aggrieved job seeker can then be made available. We agree that there should be sufficient time for job seekers to make a complaint. And we also want to encourage them to lodge a complaint ASAP. Having considered all factors, we believe it is appropriate to extend the time to twelve months, and this has appropriately addressed the concerns of members. I urge members to support my amendment. Dr. Fernando Zheng.
Chairman. The time limit for prosecution is to be extended from six months to twelve months. We think the government is moving in the right direction in agreeing to move this amendment. But the question is whether twelve months are sufficient? And if for my proposal of twenty-four months? Now, is it possible that for the aggrieved job seekers, because the time limit is now twenty-four hours, so there is less incentive for them to make complaints as early as possible? Whereas if the time is twelve months, then there is an incentive for complainants to make complaints as soon as possible. I cannot accept that argument. We have to look at the gravity of offenses in determining the time limit for prosecution. For many ser- serious crime, there is actually no time limit for prosecution. We've seen some recent cases. And around the world, there are women who came out to say that I was subject to sexual harassment many years ago. And it's not because the case happened many years ago, it's not, it's difficult to collect evidence, memory has faded, so we set a time limit. No, that's preposterous. In the community, we consider such offenses unacceptable. It doesn't matter how long it was ago, as long as you come forward and if evidence could be collected, then definitely we must pursue such cases to the end. And that's one of the main considerations in setting a time limit, I believe. Now, it doesn't matter how long a case was, say, if it is a homicide case, then if there's a chance to pursue the case, it will be pursued. So the government has to consider the gravity of the offense. Instead, here we're talking about three hundred and seventy thousand F D H in Hong Kong. And the secretary has said, with an aging population, in future, we may need six hundred thousand foreign domestic helpers to come and work in Hong Kong. Now, F D H already accounts for ten percent of our workforce. In future, it could be in high percentage, even double the percent, the current percentage. So we're talking about a group of workers who, which is very important. They have an impact of some two hundred thousand households. My household is the same. If we don't, we didn't have an F D H at home, I might not even be here. I'm not joking, because I have a child of disability. She's twenty-seven years old already, but she's still like a baby, and she needs to be taken care of full-time. So we're so grateful that we have F D H to help us out. I think it's impossible to quantify the importance of this group of F D H to many families in Hong Kong. I can't do it myself for my family. Now, because of exploitation, because of lawful conduct, the F D H will not consider Hong Kong as their first choice. And or if they have to work under exploitation and reluctantly, that would affect many of us. Now, this offense we're talking about is about a group of people coming from other places. They don't know the language, they don't know our culture, and now we're asking them to pay a high price, an equivalent of three to four months of their wages over two years is a huge sum of money. And there's an organized syndicated and even cross-boundary crime syndicate here. Is it not a severe crime? Now, when I spoke during the second reading debate, I mentioned the Justice Center's coming clean quantitative survey study in twenty sixteen. So it's scientifically based. The majority, the majority of F D H have been exploited by unlawful syndicates working across boundary. And they work together with the local finance, finance companies to exploit this group of vulnerable women. Now, you can ask any F D H or you ask F D H at home, ask them how many of them have actually just paid ten percent of the first month of their wage as commission. I'm sure is not even one in ten thousand. So this is prevailing, you know, this is crime that prevails. Have we been effective in plugging the loophole? Have we been able to take those responsible to task? Now, from government figures, in twenty twelve, we only had two successful prosecutions, twenty thirteen five, twenty fourteen four, twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen twelve cases, that's the best record, and twenty sixteen eight cases. And here we talk about three hundred and seventy thousand F D H. The vast majority of them cha- overcharged for commission. And every year, we only have a few successful prosecution cases. And then we say, oh, actually, six months of time limit is not enough, twelve months not even enough, and I proposed twenty-four months. As many experts say, the time limit should be six years. Compared to other offenses, the gravity of this offense is not any less than other offenses with a time limit for prosecution of six years or more. So why are we saying that twelve months are sufficient here as the time limit for prosecution? I said during the second reading debate that the twenty-four months tie in with their contract term. When they first come to Hong Kong, they expect to be exploited. And how would, how do you expect them to report to the Labor Department or the police as soon as they arrive? Of course not. They will first work here, and then after some time, they find out, oh, this is actually illegal. And that's the threat of, or the risk of them losing the job if they report the exploitation. So it's only towards the end of the contract, and they may have stronger incentive to report the case. So twelve months, the time limit of twelve months is about from the date of commission of the offense. It's not that after the report is made, there's still a twelve-month period. So, and, and this offense takes place as soon as the F D H arrives. So we're just talking about first twelve months when the F D H has arrived, how can you expect them to report the case? I think that's just common sense. The secretary said that if we extend the time limit, then we're just discouraging them from reporting the case sooner. Now, the Labor Department is also given their view, they said that this amendment may lead to additional costs. Because say, in twenty seventeen, among the overcharging of commission cases, twelve percent of the complaints involve reports being made after six months. So that goes to show twelve months are not sufficient. You need time to collect evidence. So the time limit covers the time you need to collect evidence and actually take up prosecution. So it's all to be done within that time period. The Labor Department has only twenty people in that unit, and here we're talking about over fourteen hundred employment agencies for foreign domestic helpers. So how much inspection can you carry out? How much can you do to collect evidence? I've cited figures. There are tens, there are thousands or tens of thousands of cases, but you could only prosecute a few cases in a year. It's like you're just trying to put up a show, that's all. And if I proposed to extend the time limit to twenty-four hours, it costs you nothing. It's just that you have a little bit more time to collect evidence and also for the aggrieved. The, she has a bit more time too, and she could make the complaint towards the end of her contract. Now, the secretary said that employment agencies are required to keep the records for twelve months. That's comes after the expiry of the accounting period. So you're good with numbers, secretary. You know, this twelve months and the twelve months for the timely prosecution have different starting point. Now, you, you, the, the timing for prosecution is twelve months from the date of commission of offense. And record keeping for twelve months is from, is upon expiry of the accounting period. So that there are two different starting points here. So how can you say the, your proposal of months of time limit prosecution is tie in with the requirement for keeping records for twelve months? So there could be a difference of as much as twelve months between the twelve months for prosecution and twelve months for record keeping. So don't try to, you know, come up with such suspicious argument. And then you try to say that memory fades, you know, memory of complainants may fade and evidence could be lost over time, and then additional manpower and resources will be required for the collection of evidence, and at the end, such cases may become unpursuable. I'm reading out the reply from the Labor Department to my amendment. Well, you, you should have devoted more resources to this cause. And when you crack down on such offenses, you're helping Hong Kong people, you're helping our economy. You know, secretary, your students, students of your university, Hong Kong University, say, said, if you were able to target these crimes effectively, they, they described this as a black market. So if you could crack down on the black market, then F D H won't be subject to exploitation, and it would do our economy good. And they said, what you're doing now is shameful. You put Hong Kong to shame. And that's a student interview by the South China Morning Post, Tiffany Chen. She said, the government considers this to be a matter for a minority group of people. That's why they don't think this is a matter of priority. And I think she has some the right to pinpoint that fact. Now, we are talking about three hundred and seventy thousand F D H in Hong Kong. Almost every one of them has been overcharged commission by employment agencies. Every day, we just watch the employment agencies and colluding with the finance companies and even with, and they also collude with the home countries of the F D H every time they're exploiting F D H.
However, we have only been able to prosecute a handful of them. So, Chairman, I'm only asking that the statutory time limit be further extended from six to twenty-four months, not a long period, and this will help prosecution. I urge members to support my amendment. Mr. Wong Ting Kwan.
Thank you, Chairman. During the deliberation of the bill, members are concerned about the statutory time limit for prosecution, i.e. six months, and that unscrupulous E A's may make use of the six months gap to play delaying tactics. And then they can evade liability, criminal liability on the expiry of the six-month period. I think the objective of the bill is to combat unlicensed operations of E A's and overcharging of job seekers on commission by E A's. The penalties will be increased. As for extending the statutory time limit for prosecution, this will minimize the chance of offenders evading their criminal liability. In a way, this will also help increase deterrence. I therefore support the amendment to extend the statutory time limit from six to twelve months. There is also another requirement in the bill. That is, after the expiry of each accounting year, the E A is required to keep the record of a job seeker for twelve months. This supporting measure will also help the officers' investigation and evidence gathering. Whilst improvements are made to the law, we must bear in mind that the investigator can only investigation on complaints so that offenders can be brought to justice. Otherwise, the, otherwise, the effort will be futile. And the department therefore should step up publicity and education and encourage aggrieved F D Hs to make complaints, especially that they are, since they are not familiar with the laws of Hong Kong. They need to have support and assistance. And in fact, the administration has undertaken that after passage of the bill, they will step up publicity in public education. After the B C has concluded the deliberation of the bill, Dr. Fernando Zheng proposed another amendment, that is to further extend the time limit from twelve, which is the proposed C S A to twenty-four months. And also for the E A's record keeping requirement. He's also proposing to extend the period, record keeping period from twelve to twenty-four months. I'm against his proposals. His rationale is that since the prosecution time limit has been extended, more time may be needed for the investigators to gather evidence. And because of uncertainty of the quality of evidence, the chance of success of prosecution may be less. But his proposal doesn't help increase the chance. As for extending the record keeping requirement from twelve to twenty-four months, this proposal was never discussed by the bill's committee. More importantly, the sector affected has never been consulted. They have not been allowed to express their views. This is against our principle of deliberating on bills. Well, of course, each member is free to move amendments, but we should follow these principles. Otherwise, these amendments may be a wide margin from the bill. And this will make the work of the bill's committee meaningless. Dr. Fernando Zheng, who is a keen champion of due process, is now moving the amendments without consultation. I wonder if his proposals are selective. So I must oppose his amendments. And I also need to make this point. We have this reinstatement order, which is in another employment amendment bill during this legislative year. In fact, again, the same thing happened. After deliberation, some members tried to get more from the administration without reaching consensus with the labor sector or the employees, employers' associations. The administration therefore has no alternative but to withdraw the bill. Well, in fact, I was a chair of the bill's committee, and the Labor Advisory Board considered the concerns, and the proposal indeed could raise the awareness on the employees' rights. The deliberation work has been so smooth, yet all of a sudden, Dr. Fernando Zheng proposed another amendment so that there is conflict with the decision of the L A B, Labor Advisory Board. It seems that we're not respecting the L A B's work. That is the cost of the government withdrawing the bill on reinstatement order. Anyway, I support the government's amendment, and I oppose Dr. Fernando Zheng's amendment. Mr. Long Yiu Chong.
Chairman, about the reinstatement order, as Mr. Wong Ting Kwan pointed out, I need to clarify this point. During the last term, when we were discussing the financial penalty for another offense, the administration and the L A B proposed fifty thousand dollars. We think that this is too low, and we then proposed one hundred thousand dollars. With Mr. Matthew Zheng, the then secretary's consent, the matter was referred back to the L A B for consideration. And the figure, as agreed now, is seventy-two thousand dollars. We're not trying to get more from the government. Indeed, even the secretary thought that further deliberation could be made. And that is why the matter was referred to the board. It's not that we, we were behaving irrationally. In fact, indeed, after the L A B's discussion, we had the good outcome. The financial penalty had indeed been increased. The point is, still, some members are not happy with the figure, and they would like to press for more. But it shows how we can make use of this procedure in the council to reach consensus. And it depends on how the administration responds to the issue, whether the administration is willing to take it forward. Now, regarding this amendment, the administration has proposed to extend the time limit from six months to twelve months. This is agreeable by all, because if the time limit is stretched, there'll be more chance of success in terms of prosecution, and more complainants will be able to make the complaints. But it is exactly like what I said just now. The administration always leave things undone. They stop midway without giving an account. What about the effect? The administration very often doesn't explain at all. For example, for the reinstatement order, the amount is seventy, seventy-two thousand five hundred and increase, but is that the end of the matter? We don't think there is enough deterrents. We'd like to have one hundred thousand dollars finally instead. Now, about this statutory time limit, of course, an extension is better than nothing. But does it really help the aggrieved? Chairman, I don't think so. Because for F D Hs, they usually have a contract of two years. And they would like to complete two or three contracts in Hong Kong before they return to their own country and stay with their own families. That is why, if an F D H lodges a complaint, they would face pressure. They would need to consider what happens in the next contract, whether they would get another contract. Dr. Fernando Zheng referred to comments made by others. In fact, the time limit could, should be stretched all the way to six years to cover two or three contracts. So that I would be worry-free, free of worries if I lodge complaint during six years. While Dr. Fernando Zhang, in fact, had already compromised. Because some would think that extending the limit from six months to six years would be too outrageous. To avoid criticisms, Dr. Fernando Zhang has only proposed to extend the limit to twelve months to twenty-four months. Otherwise, he would in fact propose extending the limit to six years. And in fact, for criminal offense, there should not be any prosecution time bar anyway. Overcharging job seekers on commission is, in fact, a criminal offense. There should not be any time bar. And one can make a complaint to initiate prosecution anytime. The first question is why must we have a time limit of twelve months? Second point, well, about the witnesses' memory fading with the lapse of time and difficulty in gathering evidence. Secretary, we must bear in mind who is the aggrieved. The victim is the aggrieved. We must help them seek justice. We must strike a balance. I mean, the aggrieved will also consider the chance of success as time goes by. They will strike a balance themselves. But if the aggrieved comes out to make a complaint, of course, they expect to win. They expect to bring the culprit to justice. That is why they definitely will retain evidence and wait for the right opportunity to make a complaint. It is important because they've come so far from their homeland to get a job here and they want to fulfill the dream and they want to have the expectations met, which is reasonable. Working for two to three contracts is just the basic thing that a foreign domestic helper would do. If we want to allow a safe period for them to make a complaint, we should extend the limit. You should consider it. Instead, you just want to double the six-month prosecution time limit to twelve to make everything simple. In fact, Secretary, when you spoke just now, you did not explain why twelve months is better than twenty-four months, apart from the fact that witnesses' memories will fade and it will be difficult to gather evidence. Well, but it has to do with the government, right? Whether gathering evidence is difficult. You may say that extending the limit to twelve is already progress. It's already longer, but you can make it even longer, isn't it? Well, for accountancy firms, they keep records of up to seven years. That's the normal practice of keeping records. For professionals, they can keep records of up to seven years. Why can't the EA's keep records of up to seven years as well? Mr. Wong Ting Kwan just now criticized Dr. Fernando Zhang of not following the due process because the sector hasn't been consulted. Of course, it's appropriate to consult the sector. But is certainly a problem to extend the record-keeping requirement to seven years?
And of course, I think Dr. Fernando Zhang could have done it better. And that is, he should have consulted members in the Bills Committee with regard to his proposal. However, we all have the right to move amendments to a bill. We all understand this. All members entitled to move amendments to a bill, so why can't we honor our duty in this regard? And in the second reading debate reply, the secretary named some members, but he didn't mention me. I'm a bit unhappy about that. I also mentioned that the Labor Department did not have enough resources to take effective enforcement. There are only seventeen staff members in your EA administration of the Labor Department. Three of them are non-permanent posts. So how much, how many investigations can they conduct? You talked about increasing the number of inspections to one thousand seven hundred. But the number of inspections is not the same as effective inspection. We want these inspections to be effective with deterrent effect. Whether they can do this, you can't tell, even though there are records. They may not have taken their job serious. You know, the most important thing for civil servants is to fulfill the requirements on statistics. So they may be able to attain the targets on quantity, but not the quality is difficult for you to ensure the quality of the inspections. Now, if since you're going to move this amendment, why can't you tell us beforehand the extra manpower you're going to give to the LD? Now, you can tell us, rest assured, we're going to abuse the manpower of the EA administration for more effective inspections so that we can feel more comfortable in passing this bill. But now, we are not sure. For the government, there is always a room for improvement, they would say that. And then, once the bill is passed, that's it. They won't tell you how they're going to improve the performance. How are they going to boost their performance? We don't know if you increase the manpower from seventeen staff members to twenty, then instead of eighteen hundred inspections, you can do twenty hundreds instead. But what will be the targeted effect? What will be the objectives and indicators? You haven't told us. As far as the amendments are concerned, I understand that the secretary is not responsible for drafting the bill and it's difficult to expect you to bear responsibility. But your your reply also revealed your department's attitude very wishy-washy. It's just squeezing a tub of toothpaste and you only respond to our repeated demands and you don't show any real commitment. The question is whether we are going to take care of the interests of the disadvantaged. As Mr. Fernando Zhang said, there are three hundred and twenty-two, three hundred and twenty thousand FDHs working in Hong Kong. This is a big population and we need to address their rights. Even though they are numerous in number, they are still the disadvantaged in our society and we may not face up to their rights. But regardless of the number of FDHs, it is important that we protect their rights and interests. We should not take the problems of the aggrieved lightly. So the administration's amendment is to extend the time from six months to twelve months. I disagree. I support Dr. Fernando Zhang's proposal, and that is to increase it to twenty-four months. Well, even though I support Dr. Fernando Zhang's proposal, I don't think he has gone far enough. It should be six years. The longer, the better. Some members or the secretary said that this will be a deterrent, will be an incentive for people to complain. Now, let me tell you that the victims are aggrieved. They should know how to handle their own business. It should be for them to decide when they come forward to make a complaint. If we are worried that information or records might be lost with the passage of time, then we should be more proactive in publication, in publicity and education to ensure the information is maintained for a right period of time so that people can lodge a complaint in due course. Dr. Zhang Lai Wan, I speak to oppose Dr. Fernando Zhang's amendment. Before I go into the theme of my speech, I'd like to talk about the reinstatement order. In Hong Kong, people ask how come policies are so long overdue and why can't we improve policies on livelihood issues earlier? I thank Mr. Leng Yuzhong for telling us the reasons for that and also the issues related to reinstatement order. Now, I think they should reflect on themselves as well. The proposals were launched two years ago and you weren't happy. You wanted to amend it. And as a result, the government was forced to withdraw the bill for a consultation with the LAB. And now they have reintroduced a bill. The compensation is much higher than what it was in the past. Well, if actually employees are entitled to more compensation because we're not happy with the compensation of seventy thousand dollars. You want to make it threefold of that amount. So the administration had no choice but to withdraw the bill to reconsult the LAB. It's not that the government wants to do it, but it does have the duty to consult the Labor Advisory Board. So this bill, which could benefit employees so much, have been aborted or rather has been stalled again and again. This amendment bill is mainly on overcharging by EA's and operating without a license. The penalties under the bill will be greatly enhanced, as said by Mr. Leng Yuzhong and Dr. Fernando Zhang. There might be hundreds of prosecutions, but successful convictions only involved a few cases because the law itself was defective. Now, instead of a fine of a maximum fine of fifty thousand dollars, it would be adjusted to three hundred and fifty thousand plus imprisonment for three years. I think we all agree that this will pose sufficient deterrent effect. And as for the time limit for prosecution, first, under the summary offenses ordinance, it was first set at six months, as in the case for many summary offenses. But after discussion in the Bills Committee, we decided to relax the time limit a bit because different ordinances may have a different time bars for prosecution. So after discussion with the administration, it agrees to extend it to twelve months and we believe it is very acceptable. However, Dr. Fernando Zhang said that is not good enough. He wants it to be twenty-four months. This is so baffling. As I said yesterday, why do you want twenty-four months? And after listening to Dr. Fernando Zhang's speech, I still fail to understand. You want it to be longer, the longer, the better, but this is unreasonable. If an EA is overcharging job seekers, now the offense is repeating on a daily basis, day in, day out. The EA may be bringing in FDHs and overcharging them. So how can you allow the offense to continue? You want it to be six years or seven years. Why don't you extend it to seventy years? Well, even in police corps, you are advised to report a crime to the police at the first instance and you should encourage FDHs to, whatever in the first few months of the contract, they find out that their salary has been docked. They should report to the police. At once, I fail to understand your logic. You are an employer of FDHs and so am I. We have two hundred and eighty thousand families employing FDHs in Hong Kong. This has released tremendous workforce of women in Hong Kong. We are very grateful to FDHs. My helper has worked for me for thirty-three years. I really cherish her. So if she is being exploited, you should come and speak up for her. Or should you tell her, no, no, you think twice. You have twenty-four months to decide whether you report this EA to the police. So I still don't understand your intention. Do you want the administration to withdraw this bill so that they can consult the LAB again? No, this tactic is not going to work this time. Regarding overcharging of EA's, they are not following the code of practice. And many employers in Hong Kong are fed up with such conducts already. I've received many requests for assistance or, Chairman, you might have also received such news, such information. An FDH is introduced to Hong Kong by an EA. She's found not to possess the skills and experience she claimed. And then she may leave after a few months. So this bill should be passed as soon as possible. I oppose Dr. Fernando Zhang's amendment and support the administration's amendment. Mr. Chen Chi Chun. Thank you, Chairman. I listened very carefully to Dr. Zhang Lai Wan's remarks. I hope my speech can facilitate her understanding of Dr. Fernando Zhang's CSA. And I urge pan-democratic members to speak once again, if possible, to help to sort out Dr. Zhang's very confusing logic. Her understanding of the bill might be distorted. Now, if all honest and good employers, as Dr. Zhang Lai Wan, there is no need to have this piece of legislation at all. We want to punish EA's unscrupulous EA's who exploit FDHs who are only earning a meager income. I support the enactment of the bill and I also support Dr. Fernando Zhang's CSA to extend the time for, time limit for prosecution to twenty-four months. In fact, we should be ashamed to be dealing with this bill at such a late stage. For sometimes, in the past, Hong Kong was the pioneer in protecting human rights. But Hong Kong is almost human trafficking center, which treat FDHs as slaves. Many FDHs are being exploited and slaved by EA's. And the government has waited until today to address this issue seriously. At the second reading debate, many members quoted statistics. In the past few years, we have seen too many cases of abuses and exploitation by EA's of FDHs. This is such a shame and Dr. Zhang's amendment will make this bill even better.
This is to allow FDHs a bit more room to pursue the matter. Well, maybe members saying that Dr. Fernando Zhang has moved this, proposed this amendment too late. There was not a chance to discuss it. Well, that's fine if that's the argument, but if you use other distorted arguments to speak against this amendment, then you will lead international organizations to think whether Hong Kong is sincere about doing something to protect FDHs. Now, the administration's reply to Dr. Fernando Zhang. And it is said that the government is already proposing to extend the time limit for prosecution to twelve months from the date of commission of defense. to extend the time limit for prosecution to twelve months from the date of commission of defense. That should allow a grief job seeker sufficient time to lodge a complaint. But it's not for you to say whether time is sufficient. It's for the victim to say so. And then in the reply said that we, at the same time, we encourage them to make a complaint as soon as possible after the case has taken place. It's the same for sex harassment or, of course, it's best if you would report the case as soon as possible. It will be easier and quicker for the police to collect evidence and conduct investigation. But then there may be various reasons so that the complainant may not be able to not report the case as soon as possible. Now, that's why there is a time limit for prosecution. If you ask me, I think we should consider this whole concept all over again. Now, if you say there's a time limit for prosecutions, as you'd say, you must do so within the time limit, otherwise there's no way you can pursue the matter, doesn't matter how aggrieved you feel. But what really is the purpose of setting a time limit? In the government's reply to Dr. Zhang, the government says they consider twelve months are sufficient for complaints to be lodged. And at the same time, complainants, victims are encouraged to make a complaint as soon as possible. So it's about striking a balance between the two, and that's where I don't get it. What do you mean by balance? You mean a balance between the rights and interests of the employment agencies and the FDH? No, I read it again, it doesn't seem to be case, that's not the logic. That is for the, those who harm others, they, there's a balance for them too. It was six months to be extended to twelve months, and Dr. Fernando Zhang wants to extend it to twenty-four months. Now, from six months to twelve months already, there will be additional costs. And then for, for, for keeping files and records, originally it's twelve months. What if we turn it to twenty-four months, it will be so difficult. I don't think anyone would just burn everything on the dot of the end of twelve months. So I, I don't see why there's need for any balance here. And then so the so-called balance, by the government, my guess is, going by the government's logic, that means we draw lines, whatever, wherever that line is, if say at one year, that the line is meant to encourage you to lodge a complaint sooner rather than later. So that means you have the duty to know your rights, don't track things out. It's the same with polling. There has to be an end time for polling station, and there's no point to extend it because this is just a hu- human habit that the people would wait to the last minute to vote. So if you set it at eleven, they will come at ten forty-five. If you say end at eight, they will come at seven something. So that's why there's need to draw a line to strike a balance. So that's the logic, I guess. But here, we are talking about minority, the disadvantaged or vulnerable. Their interests are being, they're being deprived of their interests. They are exploited. And then we say, okay, we will set a line, you say it's to help them, otherwise memory will fade. And the chance of prosecuting the evil EA successfully would diminish over time. So that's why we draw the line of twelve months is to help you. But if you draw the line in twenty-four months, well, you could say you're helping out the EA's too. So it's less easy to prosecute the EA successfully. Now, it's the same like with sexual harassment. When you were a child, you wouldn't know what this about, and then, so, but then as soon as you become a grown up, you should report a case, we won't set a time limit like that. And of course, the victims would know, the later they put off the reporting, the chance of the matter being pursued successfully would be less, of course. Because if it's close to the commission of defense, the evidence will be easier to collect. We all know that, and we talk about that all the time when we consider bills. The so-called balance. If we are making it infinity, of course, it's a major change. Here we talk about changing it from one year to two years. Some have said that two years may not be the best, and maybe it's better to be even longer. But then the so-called balance means we have to draw a line, so it can't be six years or ten years, whatever, no. But, but, but with some sex, sexual harassment or cases, or sexual assault cases, you dare not draw a line. You have to say, you know, you were a young child, you, you had this code, and you didn't know nothing. You dared not say anything, but now you graduate, you've got the adult ID card, then the line must be drawn there. No, but we don't do that, right? We just wouldn't do that. So for employment legislation, we draw a line. What is the logic for that? What is the legal basis for that? I think the secretary has to explain that clearly to the public. Now, for employment agencies, of course, you add to the administrative course. Say if you extend the prosecution time limit to six, seven years, whatever. But then, from the point of view of the victims, would they have sufficient time? Or when is the best time they, when they feel comfortable? Well, let's not say they're comfortable. You, 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 it's a matter of whether you think that Dr. Zhang's arguments stand. You can refute them, of course. Now, for most FDH, they come to work in Hong Kong for the first time. They don't have much understanding about their own rights. So for, that means for some who come here, they think exploitation is a matter of course. And they, they may think that they need to suffer this. And in fact, it's not just FDH. I know many Filipino friends who go and work as dentists or nurses in Singapore. Above and under the table, they have to pay various fees so they could leave their country and go and work somewhere else to make money. Because after doing all the calculation, it's still better for them to go and work in Singapore rather than stay in Filipino, in the Philippines. So they would end up paying those fees. So that's why some may think it's only, you know, right, we, they used to, as I don't mind to pay some, a bit more outside what the law allows. And then say if there have been successful cases. Well, actually, it's not that people are encouraged now with successful cases, it's just the FDH groups who help them. So you leave home, you come to Hong Kong, and then you eventually know how to approach the FDH rights groups. And how long would that take? One is considered sufficient time there. Don't think that if you just hand out, give handouts or give the, handout leaflets to the FDH, they will know about their rights, though. Now, an FDH contract is for a period of twenty-four months. For whatever reasons, if the contract is terminated, FDH must leave Hong Kong within two weeks. That's why FDH deterred from reporting EA's within a contract period. Now, from the FDH union statistics, we know that most complaints are lodged after the completion of the contract. So they're just trying to pursue justice after the contract is, has expired. Now, we want to allow them the opportunity to do so. Why is it not possible that we extend it by a year or so? Of course, the secretary's amendment will be passed today. And Dr. Fernando Zhang has proposed this amendment. Yes, looking at the record, maybe he has proposed it a bit late. But, but some scholars are saying that the current legislation is out of date. But, but how out of date? And I've asked Dr. Zhang whether there are, is comparison with other places. Because government likes to do that, to compare our practices with those in other places, so we can do that. And also, if we extend the time limit for prosecution, it will serve a stronger deterrent effect. And so more FDH will be encouraged to come forward. And if more people dare to come forward, then the EA's may retreat a bit and, or at least be more careful. And then what is outrageous in the government's argument is that there will be additional costs. Of course, if you do something, there will be additional costs. If you extend the opening hours of the polling station by two hours, that there will be additional costs. Now, the government said that for twelve percent of the complaints that they re-involved cases, they, they were made more than six months after the commission of defense. So if we extend the time limit to one year, how, how do you work out the figures? Now, it's actually for you to set the time limit. So within a reasonable time limit, I believe people have the rights to make complaints about the offenses because they feel aggrieved. Now, you say memory may fade. Of course, it's then for, for them to decide. Or we all know, if we do it sooner, it's better. And then there will be less of a chance for the EA's to destroy evidence. Now, for cases that's older, then collection of evidence is more difficult. So at the end, it's a waste of resources because we get nowhere. So you're saying it's a waste of resources to investigate the cases. So you just draw a line to say that, okay, you either come before the deadline or you don't at all. Because if you come later, it's very difficult for us to do investigation and we use up too much resources. It's a waste of public resources. Now, if you protect people's rights, it's a waste of resources. If we go by your logic, it's about striking a balance. And then Dr. An Chan said that it's not like we are abusing them, beating them every day. So if you extend the time limit to twenty-four months, we allow them to beat them for another twelve months. No, it's right out, when they consider it to be the safest time for them to lodge a complaint. Mr. Kwang Wai Kung. As the Chair of the Bills Committee, I probably have a better understanding of the whole deliberations. So I would like to say something on this amendment. Just now, Mr. Wong Ting Kwong said that for the CSA moved by Dr. Fernando Zhang, it's just that he wants to take advantage, to push things a bit. Well, he, we cannot impugn motive to people, so there's no way to prove it one way or the other. In any case, the order is we first deal with the secretary's motion. If the secretary's motion is passed, there's no chance for Dr. Fernando Zhang's motion to be considered. So it makes no difference whether he moves his, has moved his CSA or not in the first place. Now, this case is a bit different than the other bill on reinstatement. I'll come to that later. Now, the, what Dr. Fernando Zhang said has actually told us about the thoughts of working, of employees. Usually, they won't pursue the rights until the contract is over because they want to make a bit more money first. Yes, that's what, probably the mindset of employees. Now, of course, employers, the stronger groups, so there's really nothing much to protect the employees now.
But for our foreign domestic helpers, how should they deal with unreasonable treatment? Fortunately, there is a keen demand in the market for foreign domestic helpers. For those who can cook, for those who look after the families well, they are in keen demand. So I think that for FDH facing unreasonable treatment, they should deal with the situation as soon as possible, instead of waiting until the contract has been completed. That's the message that we wish to bring out. Well, of course, the Bills Committee is in unity in terms of the six-month time limit. They think that this is too short, and the administration, after considering member's suggestions, agreed to extend the time limit to twelve months. It's a leap forward. It's not just an addition of twelve months from twelve to twenty-four, as Mr. Ray Chan said. It's in fact an increase from six months all the way to twenty-four months. And we need to consider whether we only want to give the FDH a chance to air the grievance, to make a complaint, or are we really going after the evil EA's so that they will be convicted? If so, a shorter time limit, making the complaint to be made as soon as possible, will be more effective. And that is why we support the administration's twelve-month proposal. We don't want the time limit to be stretched too long. We believe this will be the effect. Well, Mr. Wong Ting Kwong referred to the reinstatement order. It is, that bill isn't the same as this one. The biggest difference is this. Last term, when I represented the labor sector in the council, I subscribed the views of other members. For the fifty thousand dollars, it was a consensus reached back in 2008 by the Labor Advisory Board. But Mr. Tan Kapiu and myself, along with other members, are really angry because the administration has never tabled a bill in the council regarding the fifty thousand dollars. It's been ten years. And anyhow, the matter was referred to the Labor Advisory Board for another round of deliberation. But the Labor Advisory Board also had to discuss a number of things, and the matter was then put on the shelf for another few years. We all understand that the major battleground regarding labor issues is in fact at the Labor Advisory Board. Well, the Labor Advisory Board would form a consensus based on the views of the labor sector and the employee's side. And the secretary would not want to be responsible for changing the decision of the LAB, which is formed on the basis of a consensus. So I think that the employers would be the happiest if the matter is not voted on. While you may not be clear about the attitude of employers at the LAB, but I can see it is extremely difficult from the labor's point of view because no matter what right we're talking about, if we don't hurry it through, work efficiently, they would play the delaying tactic. I know we're not talking about this bill, but let me spend some time on the reinstatement order. The government is proposing to increase the amount from fifty thousand to seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. Well, Mr. Kwang Wai Kung. Although I also allowed other members to touch on the topic, I'm only responding to that. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to wrap it up. Please go back to the bill. Well, if the reinstatement order comes with amendments and that the matter is referred back to the LAB, we don't know when the LAB will finish its discussion again. That is why, for those employees who are dismissed without ground, we need to have the reinstatement order so that they can be reinstated as soon as possible. But in the face of reality, because of the amendments now, it is further delayed. I just want to make this point, Chairman. Mr. Kenneth Lau.
Well, at the committee stage, we are debating on the amendments moved under Employment Amendment Number Two Bill Twenty Seventeen, Class Seven, about prosecuting EA's which operate without license and EA's overcharging job seekers on commissions, the prosecution time limit applicable. Chairman, if we refer to the common laws in Hong Kong and also the laws of Hong Kong, there are different time limits for prosecution. Say for common law offenses, criminal, serious common law
Time limits for prosecution, say for common law offenses, criminal, serious common law offenses. Sexual harassment, rape, murder, there is no prosecution time bar. As long as the perpetrator is still alive, the period for prosecution is infinite. Of course, under a lot of circumstances, for statutory offenses. The prosec- the government. Often shortens the prosecution time limit, especially in commercial laws. Some companies may. Need to meet licensing and record-keeping requirements because of the difficulty in gathering evidence. And also to facilitate the business of companies. Usually, there will be a cap on the time allowed for initiating prosecution. That is usually seven years after the occurrence of the incident. Or upon discovery of the incident by the government. There are different time limits for prosecution for different legislation. Usually, it's sometime after the incident has occurred. Or sometime after uh the parties concerned have discovered the incident. For Class Seven. Now, it is se- uh twelve months from the date of the offense. My first question is why? Of course, the administration has accepted members' proposal to extend the time limit from six months to twelve months. Well, of course, I am all for that. And of course, I'm all for Doctor Fernando Jones' suggestion to further extend the limit to twenty-four months. But there is still a big question mark in my mind. The objective of the bill. Is to help foreign domestic helpers who are away from their homes. To help us unleash our labor potential, to help look after our families. We help them with the basic uh protection of their human rights. When a foreign domestic helper comes to Hong Kong, she is often unfamiliar with our place. And if she's subject to abuse by the EA, if she's required to testify against the EA. And to do so within a short period of time after the incident has occurred or the offense has been committed. And as said by other members, as time goes by, it will be more and more difficult for evidence to be gathered. And that is why we should encourage complainants to come out and complain against evil EAs. As soon as the offense has been committed. But in a strange environment, in a language unfamiliar to the FTH, it's really difficult for them. I don't understand why it is twelve months after the offense has occurred. Instead of discovery of the offense. Well, of course, discovery is another issue. Maybe the perpetrator or even the victim would be happy to pay twenty percent commission. The offense would not be discovered until later, when the FTH. Has read some information and found that in fact um the overcharging has occurred. But by then, twelve months might have elapsed. So I hope you would consider it. Twelve months is an improvement, but it is not sufficient. If I have a choice, I will support Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment to extend the time limit to twenty-four months instead of twelve. There are two elements of the offense or the of the offenses. The first offense is operating an EA without license. The second is the EA uh overcharging of job seekers on commission by EAs. Both offenses undermine FTH's rights. But the point is, EAs are required to be licensed. Well, imagine, a an unlicensed company operates. A financial business under the SFO is a serious offense. Of course, the prosecution time limit will not be as short as twelve months. For an unlicensed EA. When there is a clear stipulation of licensing requirement and EA operates without license. It is unreasonable to limit the prosecution bar uh time bar to twelve months after the incident. The the occurrence of the offense. You should refer to similar provisions regulating businesses and strike a balance. It won't be as short as twelve months as you have here. Let's say if you conduct some act- business activities and after twelve months, you he's not pro- still not prosecuted. And the perpetrator may think that it's all right to operate without a license. He may fold up the first company and operate another one without the license. And then he can move on after twelve months to operate the third unlicensed company. For Class Seven, I think that in future, in your review. You should separate the two offenses. First is operating the EA without license. Because it is actually very serious. When the law expressly provides that you should get a license, and if you operate without a license, it's a serious offense. The second offense is an overcharging offense. I am going to support Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment. But of course, if there aren't sufficient votes, I'm going to support the administration's mo- um amendment. Furthermore, Chairman, many countries such as the European Union and the US. Are very concerned about Hong Kong as a business hub, as um. As a hub of foreign domestic helpers, the issue of human trafficking. Chairman, I'd just like to remind the secretary that at the moment, Hong Kong does not have a. Uh any legislation against human trafficking. Which stipulates relevant human trafficking offenses. Mister Dennis Quoc recently prepared a private bill. To enact a piece of legislation covering various human trafficking offenses. So may I say that I'm going to support Mister Dennis Quoc's private members' bill? Chairman, about the committee stage's debate on amending Class Seven. I'm going to support Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment. But if there aren't enough votes, unfortunately, I will reluctantly support the administration's amendment. While I still hope that the administration would review the statutory time limit for prosecution again. And I also hope that you would uh consider the points I've just made. Mister Dennis Quoc. Chairman. Mister Kenneth Long just now referred to human trafficking. That's the subject I'd like to speak on at this stage. But of course, I support Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment. But why is it so important to support Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment? The bill doesn't just deal with extortion by EAs on job seekers. This is just part of a major issue. When the Books Committee um debated on the bill, the secretary was not present. In fact, uh the bill uh fails to address this very big problem of human trafficking. Of course, Doctor Fernando Jones' CSA will assist the administration to. Crackdown on unscrupulous EAs that exploit job seekers. But this is only part, a small part of a very big problem. Because we are talk about EAs in Hong Kong possibly engaged in human trafficking. Debt, this is called debt bondage. Debt bondage. Is defined as a kind of human trafficking in many jurisdictions. So if we do not face up to the problem of debt bondage, we are actually conniving merchant, a businessman, or people in Hong Kong too. And in fact. Engage in human trafficking. The reason why I'm going to propose a bill on human trafficking is because uh we have bits and pieces in our law. But this is too fragmented in um dealing with this issue of debt bondage or human trafficking. As you all know, as we all know, the US government will soon. Uh put Hong Kong to Tier Three in its TIPS report. Very soon. Hong Kong will fall to Tier Three. Mister Dennis Quoc, at the committee stage, we will only focus on amendments to Class Seven. That is uh amendments by uh the secretary as well as Doctor Fernando Jones. What you are saying could have been said during the second reading stage. It should not be uh said in this committee stage. I fully understand that we are discussing Class Seven, Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment, Chairman. But I just want to point out that uh the uh strength of this CSA is insufficient. To help Hong Kong to discharge our responsibility as a member of the international community. Human trafficking is a very big issue. There are forty-eight million. Victims of human trafficking over the world. So I'm of the view that, well, I like to remind the administration. Doctor Fernando Jones will extend the time limit of prosecution, but the government is not willing to accept that. You are conniving uh many uh people to engage in human trafficking in effect. On other occasions, I'm going to uh uh to tell you why this bill hasn't gone far enough. I think Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment is very, very reasonable. And uh for the secretary's reply asking us to support its amendment is also bland and limp. Because. Uh the offense is not about uh EAs exploiting job seekers. Rather, we are actually uh conniving in bo- debt bondage. As we all know, debt bondage is among one of the definitions of drug uh human trafficking. So if it is a debt bondage or human trafficking, there is no reason why we should put a ban on. Laying prosecution. We should not allow people uh to go free because the time bar has expired. I think even Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment hasn't gone far enough. If uh people have really engaged in human trafficking or uh debt bondage. We should not provide any time bar to allow people to go free. We must do our utmost to catch these people and punish them. So that we will fulfill our duty as a member of the international community and as a global citizen. I will not uh digress to human trafficking any further. But human trafficking is really an issue we have to face up to. I hope that the Bureau will have the opportunity to read my pri- private members' bill. If you think that after passing this bill, uh the situation is a little bit better. And we have uh done a bit more to uh crackdown on unscrupulous EAs. This is too narrow-minded. You do not see the broad picture. As regards to what we have done in terms of human trafficking. We haven't done enough in law and in enforcement. In a recent uh case in uh a high court involving seven. And uh we've been severely criticized because it is an example of human trafficking to prove. Well, uh the government has been severely criticized by the judge for not having any policy, any law, and any enforcement. On human trafficking happening in Hong Kong. Therefore, I support Doctor Fernando Jones' amendment. Meanwhile, I hope the administration can see very clearly that the issue is not as minor as you think. And this is not just about EAs. It is a problem of international human trafficking. Thank you. Doctor Fernando Jones. Madam Deputy, I thank members for speaking on my amendment and also the government's amendment. Whether the time limit for prosecution should be extended to twelve months, as suggested by the government. Or to twenty-four months, as suggested by me. Uh Mister Long Yoo Chong, uh Mister Chen Chi Chin, Mister Kenneth Long, and Mister Dennis Quong all support my amendments. I think there are some misunderstandings I have to clarify. Mister Wong Ting Kwan referred to procedural justice. He said that there was no serious discussion of my amendment at the B C. And all of a sudden, I am going to extend the limit to twenty-four months, and it is unfair. In fact, Chairman of the B C, Mister Kwak Wai Kung. Knows full well, and so does Doctor Law, our secretary. On the third of January. I wrote to the Chairman of the B C uh C Paper Number Two Six Eight Bracket Oh One. I told him in the letter that I was prepared to move a CSA. And I requested a meeting to be convened to discuss that. Perhaps Mister Wong Ting Kwan hasn't done his homework properly. In fact, I have exercised my due diligence as a member of the B C. And I've also satisfied procedural justice. However, I understand that the administration would like to pass the bill as soon as possible. So ultimately, the chairman had not convened a meeting as per my request. But this is not because I did not follow the rules or that I did not request for discussion by the B C. It can be seen in black and white. You can check our website and my paper is on the internet. And so please, uh I want to get this straight. And Doctor Zhang Lai Wan said that I'm going to extend it to twenty-four months. And do I want the FTHS to uh suffer exploitation for twenty-four months before they report to the police? And uh the government's suggestion is twelve months. And if I move it to twenty-four months, then I'm asking uh FTHS to suffer for another year. I don't know whether uh I should laugh or cry. Doctor Zhang is always very humorous. Now, we are talking about the time limit for prosecution after the Commission of Defense. Now, we are talking about overcharging or unlicensed operation by EAs. The prosecution. Has to be done within twelve months after the date of Commission of Defense. Uh to um uh collect a sufficient evidence, and that is according to the administration. I'm saying that it should be extended to twenty-four months. This has nothing to do with whether the FTH concerned will continue to tolerate exploitation. We always encourage victims or people aggrieved to report a crime ASAP. So that the administration can gather evidence as soon as possible and then prosecute the offenders. This is common sense. Uh I can only say that uh. Uh, I can only say that what Doctor Zhang said was against common sense. Usually, an FDH or even a local citizen would not know the um time limit for prosecution and offense. Of course, when um something has happened to me, I should report to the authorities ASAP to start an investigation. But for various reasons, including the circumstances, the victim may not be able to prosecute or to report as early as possible. For many sex assault cases, including a recent B two case, it would take a long time before the victim would be brave enough to um to disclose her experience. And for FDHs, very often, such offenses would happen when they first arrived in Hong Kong, when they were strangers to this place. And with twenty-four months. Now, after a contract is expired, an FDH is required to leave Hong Kong within two weeks. That is a heavy burden on the FDH. Reporting an EA may cost her her job. Very often, the EA may collude with the employer. Whether there is any collusion between the two parties is unknown to the FDH. So very often, well, the FDH may have no knowledge of things in Hong Kong and she may wait until her contract is about to expire before she dares to report the case to the authorities. I think this is just common sense and I'm sure the Labor Department has ample experience of such cases. So is it that when the time limit for prosecution is shorter, the FDH will come out to report a case earlier? This has got nothing to do with the time limit for prosecution. Whether she reports her case or not has got nothing to do with the time limit. Very often, she has no idea, no understanding of the time limit at all. At a public hearing, we had a principal lecturer, David Bishop from Hong Kong U coming to express his views. He said that he had conducted some studies on the time limit for prosecution. He compared local legislation with that of other jurisdictions. Uh, for instance, claim for sharing of funds is the time limit is usually two years. And he's of the view that this should be commend comparable to taught cases. Or the time limit should be very similar to that of taught. And usually, the time bar for these cases is six years. So he has done a comparison of similar offenses. And the time limit here starts with the commission of the offense, not from the time when the aggrieved fully understands the matter and make a report to the authorities. So he's of the view that six months is not enough. Twelve months and twenty-four months are not sufficient. He's suggesting that it be six years.
Actually, if you ask me, I also think six years would be more appropriate because as Mister Long Yu Chong said, each contract is two years. They don't want their work to be affected in Hong Kong. So by the third contract, um probably, then they ready to go home. So if it's a longer period, it will allow the aggrieved party to have more time to consider the case. Because they may think that um in terms of personal safety of their work, there won't be much affected. Then they are prepared to come forward. Well, you might say then, by then, all the information, all the records are gone. It'll be hard to collect evidence. Now, of course, as a matter of principle, we want these cases to be reported as soon as they have taken place. But it is true that the records will be gone. You know, employment agencies, how long do they have to keep the records? It's for the government to decide. Now, it's twelve months at the end of the accounting year. If the government is prepared to change the requirement, say they should keep the records for six years, then six years it'll be. Just that the government wouldn't make the amendment. In fact, in my letter to the bills committee, I also suggested changing the time limit for record keeping. But after consideration, I thought it would not be approved by the president because that goes beyond the scope of this amendment bill. And that's why I did not move the amendment. But then it doesn't mean the government can't do it. On Doctor En Chan's last point, um which it was mentioned by Mister Kwong Wei Keng as well. I mistake here again my position. Now, what Doctor En Chan said is on labor issues, they are first discussed at the Labor Advisory Board and then we put them to the legislature council and then you members make amendments. And that means you're just forcing the government to refer the matter back to the Labor Advisory Board for consideration. Honestly, what are you talking about? The Labor Advisory Board is an advisory body with representatives of employers and employees. If there are new policies or important issues affecting the labor sector, then they are considered at the Labor Advisory Board. But that's just an advisory board. So who has to say the government? Doesn't the government have a position? Is the government playing the middle man only? Are you just directing traffic here? So for all matters between employees and employees, you just leave it, leave them to the employees and employees to sort them out? Well, Kwong Wei Keng already said that this society is where the those with capital have the say. So it is not an equal, an even playing field. And the employees will, employers will always win. So if you make the employees to do something, of course, they won't stand. Where, where is our government? Now, if the government is saying that it must be first agreed upon at the port, then you will come back. And that's ridiculous. That means e- even if you say you don't have a position, you already have a position. And then the Labor Advisory Board may come with something which is neither here nor there. And, and how can this amendment be considered at the, like Labor Advisory Board first before coming to the legislature? That's a joke. Doctor Fernando Zhang, please come back to this debate. Now, I was saying, responding to Doctor En Chan as to whether the proposal should first be referred back to the Labor Advisory Board for consideration. I have to respond to that. I have to put the rec, set the record straight here. How is it possible that for labor legislation issues, the Labor Advisory Board is superior to this council? And whatever has been discussed at the Labor Advisory Board can't be changed here. And once there are any changes, these must be referred back to the L A B for consideration. Now, that defies logic. That's totally against the whole system. And then you're belittling this council. I just don't get it. All my members, who's a member of this council? But all of a sudden, reduce this council to a rubber stamp. So whatever is agreed by, upon by the L A B, it comes to here. We just put a stamp on it. We don't, can't even touch it. If we want to change anything, it must go back to the L A B first. Now, that's ridiculous. It's totally unacceptable. We are, we represent the people. We have gone through elections. This is where the legislative process takes place and that's a democratic process. Now, the L A B is a government-appointed body that is supposed to represent employees and employees. And then they, we shouldn't let the board monopolize labor issues. Madam Chair, what's so wrong? What's the big deal about twenty-four months? It's actually too short a period already. The government shouldn't just extend the time limit for prosecution. The government has also increased resources. The police, the immigration department, and the labor department must work closely together to crack down on these unscrupulous EA's. So how members will support my amendment, so I speak. Mister Long Yu Chong. Now, later on, members may vote to support the government's amendment from six months to six months or Doctor Fernando Zhang's amendment from twelve months to twenty-four months. But I think there's no conflict between the two. For any aggrieved parties, the sooner they report the case, the better. So there is no disagreement on that. And then some members suggested that if we extend the time limit from twelve to twenty-four months, then that may lead to some delaying making a report. Um, yes, it's possible that will happen. Some may then delay their complaint because they have more time. True. But then, have you ever considered why they want to delay making a complaint? Have you, you wouldn't think about that? And just saying that now they have a choice to delay the complaint. But as I said, it's their own choice if they want to delay the complaint because they want to find the best time to make a report. That's only fair. It's like, say, someone has been a victim of robbery or other crime. The police would always suggest that you first go to a place that's safe, protect yourself before you call the police. So that's again common sense. But then, now you're saying, no, you must make complaints as soon as possible. Don't wait or don't delay. And that's against what the police advise the public. And I find that odd. Now, if the victim feels aggrieved as she chooses not to complain on day one or day two, there must be a reason. But no, you wouldn't talk about that. You talk about something else and I find it really strange. And I don't get it at all. And I've already said so earlier, actually. They come all the way to work here. Why? Because they want to make a living or make some, make some money. And with their money, they can help their family to have a better life. So as I said, usually, an FDH may work two to three contracts here. But if, say, they want to renew the contract, they'll be worried what will happen. Maybe the employer will, won't keep her and then she'll have to find another employer. If she has to find another employer, she has to go through the intermediary again. And then she's concerned, next time, what might happen? So these are justified, these concerns. And then Doctor En Chan said that we are condoning the EA's that they can continue to commit offenses. True, there is this possibility. Now, if you want to prevent the EA's from committing crime, the duty does not rest with the complainant. Who has the duty? I always say it's the Labor Department because it's responsible for carryout inspection. Can the Labor Department prosecute those parties? The duty rests with the Labor Department. But now you're putting the onus on the aggrieved. Have you got it wrong entirely? Now, actually, I already said it to the secretary before. Now, you come to propose this amendment. Why didn't you tell us how much additional power you have to carry out the work? You're just saying that you are stepping up your work and that's all. Is that reasonable? So that's something I want to, that's the point I want to repeat. And Aristide Ray Chan quoted from the Bureau's reply. They said there's need to strike a balance. But what balance? Now, I'm aggrieved. The EA has taken money from me unlawfully. So what balance is there to keep? The balance is about the government. So on the part of government, it's about not spending so much money. Start, end of story. So the government's already said this. If it takes longer for the complainant to come forward, then the investigation may take longer and that will mean additional costs. So it's sad that the government actually uses money to measure how grievances should be addressed. Is that fair? Is it about justice? That's the government's reply in black and white to Doctor Fernando Zhang, that it will lead to additional costs. Now, I find it sad if that's the mindset of the government. You're supposed to uphold justice. You should, you know, prosecute people who break the law. That's your duty. If, if we go by your logic, there's no point keeping the police. Keeping the police is a waste of money. The police are responsible for targeting crimes. But you're saying you're worried about wasting resources. That is after investigating into a case, you get nowhere, so it's a waste of money. But that happens to many cases already. You don't collect enough evidence. You can't charge people. There are plenty of such cases already. Now, because you care about not wasting resources, you don't allow grievances to be addressed and that's not just or fair. As Mister Kenneth Leng said, there are different time limits for different types of offenses. I could see that. It's the same with the um protection against wage insolvency, protection on wages against insolvency fund, P W I F. That is, if there's a default in wage payment and so on. And then the ordinance states that a time limit of six months upon the termination of the contract. So a claim must be made within that. And, and, and we can see why. And so that's why we are not proposing to change the time limit from six months to twelve months, for instance. Why? Because the contract between the employer and employee has come to an end. And if it takes too long to pursue, to make a claim, it doesn't make, it serves no purpose. Because what is most important is that employees get payment as soon as possible.
The other point which is important is that the P W I F will need to file a claim against the company. So a time limit is necessary for a claim to be successfully filed against the company. Otherwise, the balance in the fund will be lessened because there is no injection from the government and the P W I F operates independently. This is understandable. However, for this bill, if the prosecution time limit so imposed hinders complainants from prosecuting the offender, it is really unfortunate. Apart from a waste of public money, if we, well, in fact, the argument is that the other side said the twenty-four months may be a waste of public money. But twelve months would also lead to the same consequence. Because you may be still be in the course of gathering evidence and then you need to stop if the time bar of twelve months is reached. So from this perspective, why are you accusing him of wasting public resources? For stretching the time limit to twenty four months but not twelve months? Madam Deputy, I hope that we can support his proposal of twenty four months time limit for the victim and the aggrieved to have an option. So that there is leeway for the aggrieved to deal with the, her own issues before making a complaint. I so submit. Doctor K K Kwok. No, Mister Wong Ting Kwong, your second round. Thank you. Madam Chair. Now, about the Employment Amendment Number Two Bill, twenty seventeen. In the course of scrutinizing the bill, another issue stems from it, that is reinstatement order. Doctor Fernando Jones said that I didn't do my homework, I need to clarify the matter. Well, it was at the last meeting of the reinstatement order. It was the twenty fourth of November, twenty seventeen. When the last meeting was held. And your letter to me actually was stated the twenty second of January, twenty eighteen. On the twenty fourth of November, twenty seventeen. The Bill's Committee by then had already completed the scrutiny of the bill. If you respect, if you had respect for the work of the Bill's Committee and if you had respect for the fruit of everyone's labor. And if you wanted to move a, an amendment, you should have done so at the Bill's Committee, so that the Bill's Committee would have a chance to examine your proposed amendment. I wonder why it took you so long to write to me? And this is the homework I did. That's the first point. Second point. I don't agree with your assessment of the Labor Advisory Board. This is a structure that allows discussion between two parties. And you don't have all to say. And I don't agree with what you said just now. I don't think the two sides are confrontational. I think that the employee, employers and the labor sector are mutually dependent. We care for each other, we love each other. It's not combative and confrontational, as you said. Otherwise, there would be a lot of conflicts in society. From employers' perspective, I must say that there is a minority of employers, just a handful, who are unscrupulous and we should go after them. However, the majority of employers are reasonable. Similarly, let's not forget that there are also individual members of the labor sector who are really evil. They incite social unrest, they stir up social conflicts. We therefore should go after both unscrupulous employers as well as evil employees. Just now, you said that I didn't do my homework and that's what I want to explain to you. Thank you. Doctor K K Kwok. Chairman, I speak in support of Doctor Fernando Jones's amendment. Now, one highlight of the bill is that the situation of abuse on F D Hs by EAs will be curbed by increasing the penalty from, up to thirty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, this amendment is about whether we support Doctor Fernando Jones's proposed extension of time limit to twenty four months or Justice Secretary's proposal of twelve months. For foreign domestic helpers who are away from their homeland, who are helpless and powerless, we should really have some empathy and put ourselves in their shoes. Because for the majority of foreign domestic helpers, they have left their homeland to come to this unfamiliar place. They may not be familiar with our language and our culture and many of them only speak the hometown dialect. Is there any room and time for them to learn new information? In fact, even for employers, other members of the public, they are not aware of the substance of the bill. Doctor K K Kwok, it's your phone. But my phone hasn't rung, maybe it's interference. All right, I'll put the phone away. So if we can put ourselves in their shoes, I think it is impossible not to accept the proposal of extending the limit further. We all understand that when they first come to Hong Kong, it takes them months to get used to Hong Kong. They may need to get used to the workplace, the feeling of leaving the families behind. They may even need to adjust themselves to different dietary habits, for example. According to government statistics and data collected by organizations, this is apparent. Let me quote for the Asian Domestic Helpers Association from October twenty fifteen to sixteen. Seventy percent of employment agencies overcharged job seekers on commission by one thousand one hundred and thirty two dollars, several times more than the statutory limit. That is seventy percent of the employment agencies. Foreign domestic helpers haven't been overcharged with commission. Some of them may be smart enough to seek help, to take legal action, but it takes a long time. I don't tend to believe that many of these foreign domestic helpers have the knowledge to make a complaint even. So why can't we allow them more time? Give them twenty four months so that they can, that, they can have more opportunities to make a complaint. This is illogical. According to the secretary, if the time limit is extended to twenty four months, memories of witnesses will fade and it will be more difficult to gather evidence. This is contrary to our established practice, be it criminal prosecution and/or civil proceedings in Hong Kong. It is against our practice. Many members referred to the hashtag Me Too campaign about sexual harassment. The victims might still be underage or they might be very young when it happened. And after decades' time after they've grown up, they can still take legal action against the acts of sexual harassment. We're talking about ten years after the incident happened. Can we ask the law enforcement agency to tell the victims not to pursue the complaint? Because they were too young back then? Would you suggest to the victim that your memories would be muddled and you might have forgotten about it? And it might not be successful if you pursue further? Would anyone ask that? Would court, would the court strike down such cases in Hong Kong? Or even accuse the victims or police officers of taking a case of a decade old to court? To make the judge's job difficult? The answer is of course, no. There is no time, time bar for prosecuting a criminal offense. Similarly, if you want to file a claim against negligence or tort, it's usually three years. As far as the prosecution or the time limit for filing a claim is concerned. And under special circumstances, the court may grant an extension of time. This is usually the time bar under the laws of Hong Kong regarding criminal or civil proceedings. Unless the secretary is suggesting that we will disregard all the practices. Or that we will change our established practice and first ask the witnesses in criminal or civil proceedings whether your memories are still good. And perhaps engage an expert to check the memory of witnesses. Because you know, the administration now has a really short memory. See, Carrie Lam, the chief executive, also had a short term memory. She doesn't remember what she's promised us in the election manifesto. We must bear in mind that foreign domestic helpers are the weakest group. They are the minority group, even weaker than the labor sector because they do not have family support, there is no one to help them. It is all right if some of them get information from their peers in the homeland. But there are foreign domestic helpers who are loners. They are deprived of day offs by the EAs or by the unscrupulous employers. So how much spare time do they have in learning this new information? I don't think the government should impose any time limit at all. The government should not say that a time limit of twenty four months will make it unenforceable. Well, but of course, we must not forget that in reality, cronyism exists. If the proposal is floated by a pan Democrat like Doctor Fernando Jones, of course, you cannot accept the proposal. Just now, Mister Wong Ting Kwong, the lawless, said in, well, referred to some representatives of the labor sector as evil members. And while the F T U members are just sitting next to you and I really am worried for them. Well, Mister Wong Ting Kwong just now said that for the sake of maintaining harmony, the matter should be referred back to the L A B is all right. I don't mind if the proposal of twenty four months time limit is referred to the L A B for discussion. If the Policy Bureau believes that the legal proposal should be discussed by the L A B first, I'm all right with that. Because for the F T U, they have such clout in the L A B. And if they all support twenty four months time limit, I think it's easy for them to get support from their side of the L A B, unless they don't want to and we need to ask why. If harmony is the only tune to be played, then we don't need to enact any legislation at all. If you consult employers and all, all the employers and all the EAs, what should the time limit be? Of course, they would say not twenty four months, but six months. So that, so that the offense will not be discovered in six months and they would go scot free. And then the legislation will be toothless because the unscrupulous EAs will never be caught. If the government is really putting people first and I believe the new administration and the new secretary are minded to help the minority, then you should take the correct step and extend the time number to twenty four months. I think the secretary should explain clearly. If we cannot extend it to twenty more, four months and we end up having only twelve months, I think the government owes the F D Hs a lot. Mister Matthew Zhang, this year's in his web, in his blog, talked about contribution by F D Hs to Hong Kong and I was really moved. And then even the chairman of the Elderly Services Commission and ex co member was saying that we might have to employ F D Hs to care for our elderly. So if you rely so much on F D Hs, perhaps you should tidy up the relevant ordinance or come up with a better amendment. If you allow Doctor Fernando Jones's amendment of twenty four months to get through, I won't see, I can't see how F D Hs organizations or international organizations would condemn Hong Kong government for doing this. On the contrary, Hong Kong's reputation as a place with civilized employers and civilized employment of F D Hs will be greatly enhanced. I also like to hear from the pro-establishment members because Mister Wong Ting Kwong used inciting language against employers and employees. I think as a political party that really lobby for labor rights should remain silent here. I think they should cut ties with Mister Wong Ting Kwong. And I hoped that the secretary could have incorporated Mister Doctor Fernando Jones's amendment on his own initiative. But then, it's not acceptable to it and I think this is rather sad. Given that our political system is very distorted. And if the pro-establishment camp should side with the government, the outcome can be very tragic. So if they want to to be, if they don't like what the opposition proposes, then they will not just disqualify members and people's candidacy. Even more horrible things can happen. With these remarks, I support Doctor Fernando Jones's amendments. Mister Jeremy Tam. Chairman.
The amendments or the amendment bill seeks to protect F D Hs. In fact, not just F D Hs, it intends to protect all job seekers. The civic party supports the bill as well as Doctor Fernando Jones's amendment. Many members have pointed out the exploitation faced by many F D Hs. I'd like to add another perspective to this discussion. The bill will protect families employing F D Hs as well. Because I've received many come, many call requests for assistance from families. The F D Hs has, have resigned and many double income families will then have to see how they can take care of their kids and also their elderly parents. Mister Jeremy Tam, we are now discussing clause seven of the bill. This is the committee stage. I do understand. Ah, well, I haven't, it's less than one minute into my speech. I have to explain why I support Doctor Fernando Jones's amendment. Please bear with me, I'm not going to spend all my fifteen minutes. Very quickly, I will explain the grounds on which I support the extension to twenty four months. Because I think my perspective might not have been mentioned by other members. So do allow me to do this. So when it comes to the payment in lieu of notice and also a passage to return home, so and so forth, they are very expensive to the F D H concerned. So they would want to resign. This is all because of the problem of debts they've incurred. It may take a little bit more time for evidence to be gathered on loans and debts. I support Doctor Fernando Jones's amendment because your bill only governs local EAs. They will be punished for overcharging job seekers. In fact, EAs in Hong Kong may help F D Hs to take out loans. In fact, E A's in Hong Kong may help F D Hs to take out loans. Let's say the helper is from Indonesia. She has to pay the Indonesian E A as well. So the helper has incurred heavy, heavy debt. And even if you confine the commission to ten percent for a local E A. There are still other ways for the money or the fees to be charged in her hometown. So if there is sufficient evidence to show that a local E A has charged. A commission. From that helper, and if it is higher than the prescribed commission. Then the Labor Department will then prosecute on behalf of the helper. This is found in paragraph ten of the Bill's committee report. So please allow me time. You should not say that I've digressed, even though I have gone on for less than a minute. So there are restrict, there are constraints in this bill. First, there must be proved that there is a financial transactions between the local and the E A. And also the E A in her hometown. And you have to prove that there has been overcharging. And of course, this E A will do as utmost to cut ties with the E A overseas. The boss or the boss of a local E A can set up another company in Indonesia. To receive the payment very indirectly. So you still cannot tackle the problem of a local E A forcing a helper to take out loans. So even after this amendment bill, you cannot avoid the scenario of a helper being heavily indebted. So you should see whether the law can be amended to crack down on loans to be taken out by F D Hs in Hong Kong. The government has proposed to extend the time limit of prosecution to six months, to twelve months. And Doctor Fernando Jung to twenty-four months. I support both because that would accord more time for the administration to gather evidence. To prosecute unscrupulous E A's. As I said, more time is needed because evidence gathering overseas also takes time. So I hope members can support Doctor Fernando Jung's amendment of twenty-four months. Thank you. Mister Ho Kai Ming.
Thank you, Chairman.